And there are no words that I have that I think will make anything better. But I do know that we all know we need to know what we can do. And so I put on the bottom of all of your agendas, the email addresses for the Brady Campaign, which is BradyUnited.org, or the Every Town for Gun Safety, which is EveryTown.org. If you go to their websites, they will, there's a big donate button, of course, everybody always needs our money, but they will also give you ideas on how you can get involved and how you can maybe help. And I know that's what we all want to do, is we want to find out what we can do. And that is one thing. Two more things. Who watched the presidential debates? Did we all enjoy ourselves? Do you got a favorite yet? You're sick, we're getting there, huh? I have a new saying that I would like us all to embrace. I'll vote blue no matter who. So we all say that together, everybody. I'll vote blue no matter who. I'll vote blue no matter who. And if you didn't tongue, you're, tie your tongue, then you're better than me. Thank you so much. As I always say, if a grilled cheese sandwich has the best chance of beating Donald Trump, I will be Team Grilled Cheese all the way. Which leads me to my third point, which is kind of rules that I would like us to strive for when we're discussing other Democrats, especially in Dem-on-Dem-on-Dem-on-Dem races. I would like us to use language like, I think that grilled cheese supports my values better than the other candidates in the district. And I don't, I don't discount the accomplishments of ham and cheese on rye, but I think that grilled cheese better espouses my values. So you can obviously change the nouns, but not the other verbages. So I would like us to try, when we have, when we have meetings like this, where we have multiple Democrats running for the same race, that we use positive language when describing ourselves, and not try to tear down other Democrats, because we're not interested in Dem-on-Dem violence. That will come, violence against us will come from the Republicans. And tonight, we have a, we have a forum. We do not vote on primaries in our club, because again, we don't want to engage in Dem-on-Dem violence, but we will hear wonderful speakers tonight that are running for the same race. And if you find somebody that really speaks to you, and it hurts you in your soul that you're not allowed to vote for them, guess what? Find them after the meeting and volunteer for them. There's nothing to keep any of us from working for the candidate that you find the most inspirational or you would love to see in a seat. You can donate to them and you can give them your time, which is very valuable. So anyway, with that, we are ready to start our program. Our first speaker is going to be Toni Atkins. In 2000, Toni Atkins, Toni Atkins was elected to the San Diego City Council, including serving as interim mayor of San Diego. In 2010, Toni was elected to the State Assembly, and in 2014, she was elected by her colleagues as Speaker of the Assembly, the first San Diegan and the first lesbian to hold that office. In 2016, Toni was elected to represent the 39 districts in the State Senate. Among the bills she signed was SB2, which created a permanent source of funding for affordable housing. Yes. And in March of last year, she was elected and sworn in as the first woman and first openly LGBTQ person as President pro temp of the State Senate. She's the first person to have led both Houses of the Legislature. Toni's been a lifetime champion for affordable housing, the natural environment, healthcare, veterans, women, and the LGBTQ community. Please welcome Toni Atkins.
Oh, it's on. Thank you. So then do I need to move away from this mic? I'm such a bad technological... Well, good evening. It is incredible to see so many great Democrats in the House. I love coming to La Mesa, because this is probably one of the biggest clubs, and every time I'm here, you have a huge program, you have a lot of things to discuss, and you're here and you're engaged, and I think that is critically important, particularly in this day and time, when there is just so much out there that, that can make you feel discouraged, depressed, and yet we go on and we fight. And that's who we are in San Diego, that's who we are in California, and that's who we are as Democrats. So I'm thrilled to be here and thank you. I know you have a big agenda, so I thought I would just give you some highlights of the budget. We finished the budget. We have a terribly busy month in May-June as it relates to the budget in California. And I'm getting ready to go back Monday. We've been on a legislative recess, so we could come home and be in our districts and get to all of the meetings that we don't get to come to throughout the week. I was really grateful being on the City Council. You were in your district, you were in your community all the time. When we're in Sacramento, we have to plan to come to our communities and be at, at meetings. So we go back on Monday for one month, and in that month, we will come to closure on basically a couple of thousand bills. The Assembly, their bills are in our House right now, our Senate bills are in the Assembly, and we have to bring them back to our House of origin, finish up, and send them to the Governor by September 12th or 13th, whatever that Friday is, the 2nd September. And then we wait a month to see if the Governor is going to sign our bills. So it's going to be incredibly busy during the last month, and I have heard from so many stakeholders on so many critically important bills that are in the Senate right now, waiting to be heard on our floor and to come out of our Appropriations Committee. So it's going to be really busy. But it does provide us an opportunity to come up and give you a little bit of an update. So our state budget, you know, it's the best we've had in a generation, a $213 billion budget. When I got elected in 2010, I've told you this before, we had a $26 billion deficit. That's what Arnold Schwarzenegger left Jerry Brown, and we got there and had to figure out what to do about a $26 billion deficit. Well, thanks to Governor Brown, to the Legislature, and to the voters of California, to you, we were able to turn that around, and now we have a $19.2 billion surplus. Now, that's a reserve. We have about $16.5 billion in the rainy day fund that you supported. That's money we cannot touch until we go into a defined depression or recession, and it's clarified what has to happen for us to touch that money. So we've got $16.5 billion there. We've got a $1.4 billion regular reserve for unanticipated things. That used to be fires, but now those are all the time and anticipated. But 1.4 billion. We have $900 million in a safety net reserve. It's a healthcare safety net reserve, because when we go into a recession, the first programs that tend to get cut are those critical programs in healthcare and human services. So we now have a $900 million safety net reserve. We just started this past year, an education safety net reserve. We have $400 billion in that. So our goal is to make sure that we have those reserves. We paid, finally, we paid off the debt that we owe from the recession. It's the last remaining debt of actual debt that we owe from the recession. And on pensions, we actually were able to put $4 billion of supplemental payments on the state share for CalPERS and CalSTRS. That helps the employees, the retirees, and of course, the people in the classrooms. So that was pretty important. That was one-time money. So we put one-time money into paying down the pension, or supplemental payments to pension. We managed to support a cut to small business in the amount of $460 million. So those are the broad, big things that we were able to do. On housing and homelessness, this past year in this budget alone, we put $2.5 billion. That money will be coming into the communities to be spent here. Local jurisdictions will determine how to do that. $650 million will be split between cities, counties, and continuum of cares, those of you that follow that, to determine how the money will be spent on the ground in communities to deal with issues of homelessness, rapid rehousing, in some cases shelters. While we try to build more housing, we have to deal with the on-the-ground problem, and you all know that homelessness has gotten worse, not better, despite everything jurisdictions have tried to do locally. We put $500 million into infrastructure to support housing development. You can build it, but if you don't have the right infrastructure in place, it, it's not a quality development, it doesn't lend to the quality in the community. We added $500 million to the low-income tax credit. That's a leveraging tool that developers use between federal tax credits, local, that help them pay for the development of a project. We put $500 million, or $250 million into planning grants. So when you talk about how you plan for growth and density, many of our general plans of cities, and many of the community plans in larger communities, like the city of San Diego has 42 planning committees, those plans have been updated. And if you want to talk about how to build, you need to have updated community plans with community input on how you want your community to grow. We also put money into UC CSU and the Community College to help with homelessness, food insecurity, about $169 million. So while we have the resources, we're trying to be supportive. There's multiple streams of, of housing money that comes from cap and trade. That money is for housing in transit-oriented development areas. Parts of La Mesa are eligible for that money along the trolley. We've had money from Prop 41, that's the veterans' dollars, to help support multifamily projects for returning veterans and their families. We had SB2, that's my permanent source of funding, about $250 million. SB3, Prop 63. So we're really trying to put that money together in a way that makes a real difference in communities, but it's really going to take the neighborhoods, the communities, and the cities to figure out how best to spend that. And I know that your City Council members, if you're here in La Mesa, will be interested in what their share of that money is directly, as will other cities and communities. We got to expand the earned income tax credit. That is a critical program for struggling, working Californians. It is a program that, if matched with the federal earned income tax program, can get families anywhere from $100 to $5,000 or $6,000 back. That's real money in the pocket of working Californians. We added an additional $1,000 tax credit for families with a child under six years of age, and increased the tax credit for filers with incomes from about $14,000, that is not a lot of money, to $30,000, for a total of $600 million additional dollars. And we also included independent contractors in terms of their ability to file as well. So we're trying to hit category after category and increase the amount of support for working Californians. Disaster preparedness. We have had to put hundreds of millions of dollars for disaster preparedness for communications, infrastructure, new funding to help communities affected by disasters. Those of you that remember the fire safe councils that exist, we want to put more money into that, because that helps local communities, neighborhood communities, not just cities or counties, but neighborhoods that have fire safe councils, put those resources to use, so those grants are going to be available also. Schools, record level of funding. Now, that doesn't mean it is everything schools need. It is a floor, not a ceiling. We have $81.1 billion to public schools, that's about $2.7 billion more than last year. What, sometimes those billions kind of get lost, and what does it really mean on the ground? When, 2012, I was in office for two years, 2012, the amount of money that we paid for K through 12 and Community College, or K through 12, Holdoff Community College, was $44 billion. Let's think about the delta and the difference between $44 billion and $81 billion in our local classrooms, K through 12. That's double the amount of money that our classrooms didn't have for a decade, and that was the impact on teachers and on students. So finally, we have been able to reinvest in education. We helped fund in higher education, 15,000 new undergraduate slots at UC and CSU. Our schools are getting record amounts of applications from out-of-state, from in-state, and our goal is to make sure that in-state students are going to be given higher consideration for our UC, our public school that we support as taxpayers, UC CSU. We did a second fee waiver for a second year of college, at Community College level, so free Community College education for the second year. And we added Cal Grant money for students who need to receive those awards. We continued the middle-class scholarship for families who make too much to apply for all of the Cal Grants that are available and, and other forms of subsidy for students. We added more money for that. Middle-class healthcare. One of the things that we were, we're trying to respond to is undercover California. The subsidies for some families are still just too much for people to be able to afford to buy into covered California. They're not eligible for Medi-Cal, our state program, but they make a little too much, but yet they don't make enough to cover their families. So we added $450 million to increase subsidies for family, families that are enrolled in covered California, who earn up to the equivalent of $150,000 a year for a family of four. So we're trying to help pay for the healthcare premiums for folks, so that you can actually enjoy having the Affordable Care Act in covered California. We put $130 million into ongoing funds for safe and affordable drinking water in communities that are currently suffering from contaminated supplies. It is outrageous that in the richest state, in the richest country in the world, that some communities in California don't have clean water. You know, people love to talk about where I grew up, and that we carried water from a spring, and, you know, until I was age eight, we carried water, we didn't have running water. I'm like, let's not discuss my history, let's talk about the fact that in Porterville, California, people don't have drinkable water. So it's something we have to take seriously, and this year, we finally managed to find the money without raising taxes on ratepayers to do it, because when you have a surplus, you should try not to raise fees and taxes. You should do it when you need to, and it's relevant to the issue, and we were able to do that. That was one of our Senate priorities, and I was really thrilled to be able to do that. Undocumented young adults. We put money into healthcare for individuals to be able to be seen and taken care of. It'll lower the emergency room wait times, state costs. We provided about $98 million to expand Medi-Cal to low-income young adults, regardless of their immigration status. By the way, you know, we pay for that anyway. They just get really, really, really sick, like anybody who would wait until, regardless of immigration status, if you don't have healthcare, you wait until the very last minute, it's really bad, then you go to the emergency room, you have debt that cripples your entire family, and the state and the taxpayers end up paying for it anyway. So why not offer dignity, real access to healthcare, and, and do it the right way? Some of the Senate, you know, I'm in the Senate, and there's the Assembly. Through negotiations, are being asked for childcare, special education. Of course, we all, Assembly and Senate, agreed that UC CSU and Cal Grants we needed to reinvest in. The safe water, the parks and water quality project under Prop 68, that should be money coming back into our communities, working with your local governments. Seniors, and, you know, we are, the Governor is going to be unveiling his advisory body to work on a master plan for seniors. We are a growing population. I am one of those senior citizens now, and our population is growing, and we need to actually access services in the state of California for the growing aging population. And we want to take advantage of our point in time and, and how well we're doing to actually put together maybe a master plan. And I was really thrilled that the Governor was interested in that. Census. Let me end with the Census. You know, the federal government has put little to no money into the Census count, and we all know why. California has some of the hardest-to-count communities in the country. We have the highest population, we have the highest diversity factor when it comes to our population, and we, as a state, put in about $150 million last year, $30 million this year. We are spending more to try and make sure that we are counting all of our residents, because that translates into federal money. We send money, our federal taxes, off to Washington DC, and the largest percentage of it does come back. We are considered a donor state. Other states reap the benefit of our taxes. It's, you know, it's by proportion of need. Well, if you don't count the individuals and people, you don't get the money back. And we know that people of color, we know that white rural renters are the most vulnerable to undercounting. 4.5 million young children live in neighborhoods where there's a high risk of undercount. So kids are undercounted, and they, they need the services, education, funding, healthcare. In 2010, the US Census failed to count almost 1 million children younger than age five in California alone. So we have more hard-to-count residents than any other state. That's why we're dedicated to putting resources into that, and the United Way is the lead organization in San Diego County. They received about $1.6 million to administer this program, and they have a regional effort. So if you can, and you can always call my office, you can call, actually, any of your Democratic delegation members, any of us, and we all have designated people in our offices, because this is a state function. It's not political, it, it obviously turns out to be, but it is not technically a political thing. It is a function of government to count your population. So we all have designated staff members in our offices. And my office in San Diego, it's Chevelle. We have a number of things coming up to focus on the Census and get you information on, on what we need to do to make sure that everyone is counted. And so that is really important. That is our biggest thing, because it will deal, it will affect our representation in Congress. It could, we could lose a seat in Congress, it may be the only way the Republicans get one back. Let me knock on wood. But it is really serious in terms of representation and dollars that we should get back in our state for services that our citizens and our residents need. The last thing I will mention is one piece of legislation. I'm doing less pieces of legislation because of the pro temp and the President, the Senate. I feel like my job is to help the members of my caucus, the Senate Democratic members, get their priorities done, and their priorities tend to mirror mine: housing, healthcare, equality, equal pay, representation of women in corporate boards, all kinds of those things, the environment, labor issues. And so I tend to help members get their legislation done. But I do have one piece of legislation that's critical, and now that it's getting down to the last four weeks, people are really coming out after this piece of legislation. It's SB1, and SB1 is the Water, Clean Water, Clean Air, and Worker Protection Act in California. It deals with all of the protections, federal protections, that have been put into place over the last four decades, under the clean water, the clean air, endangered species, and worker protections in this country. The administration in Washington, led by, I don't like to say his name, anyway. He is undoing those protections. These were protections put into place by bipartisan legislatures in the administration, Republican presidents, Democratic presidents. He is trying to undo them. And so my bill codifies into state law those federal protections, and it has a sunset, amazingly, two years after the current administration is due to leave office, should everything go wrong. It is to make sure we have those protections in place. And we know that he's trying to undo. He has put in charge of the EPA, someone who worked in the coal industry. He, I mean, on and on and on, there's so many examples, and so this bill is critically important, to hold the line in California for our values, our programs, and what we hold dear. If you want to talk about a Green New Deal, everything we're doing in California is the implementation of the broader vision of a Green New Deal. If we lose these protections, we will have to fight hard to get some of them back. So here's where people are coming after us, even in the state of California. Water. The Endangered Species Act addresses and deals with how water flows in California. And in order to protect salmon, steelhead trout, and the smelt, there has to be water flowing in rivers. If you divert that water for other uses, then you're not protecting those species. What has become a water war in the state of California is that many in parts of the state would like to see those regulations taken away, because, and if those regulations are removed, yes, you will get water throughout the state, but you're also going to give up some endangered species that will never come back. And salmon in particular is, is pretty much in danger if you divert that water. So a lot of the water interests in this state are now coming hard and heavy against this bill to try to kill it in the 11th hour in the Assembly. So it's really important, it's going to be the thing I work the most on, and I think that's more than enough. If you want information about how to be helpful, because it's, it's not a Republican-Democrat thing. It is people who are more concerned about being able to capture water for their own use. So it's some ag users, it's the Chamber of Commerce who calls this a job-killer bill. We know that it is not. So I would love to have your support, if you are able to talk to any of the Assembly members, to stand strong, and particularly in Central Valley, California. That's where the, I think the opposition is, is the strongest. So with that, I would love to take any comments or questions, recognizing that you don't have a lot of time, and I will let your...
We have time for about two questions. Meryl?
Sorry, I shouldn't have talked so long. I should know you're in support of SB1. I should just say, call and tell everybody to support SB1. Yes.
We know that the water is very precious in the Central Valley and in the Sacramento and San Joaquin Valleys as well. But my question is, is there anything that, there are lots of things being planted in these places, and a lot of these should not be planted there, because they're basically water suckers. And is there anything legislation-wise that, I don't know, I guess what I'm saying is, why are they planting stuff where there is no water to begin with?
Right.
And sucks it up afterwards also? And is there any legislation pending or anything being thought about how we reduce crops that suck water when we don't need them?
Right. It's a great question. I'm assuming everybody heard, why are we still planting things in parts of the state that take up a lot of water? That would be a whole session, that would be great for you to have a forum on, because it's more complicated than you realize. And I would say this, hundreds of thousands of acres have been fallow because of the drought. You know, nature has forced that. Our water rates have gone up throughout the state, because you have to pay for the infrastructure. It is a reasonable expectation in terms of the rates we pay for water up and down the state, that you pay for the infrastructure. Our water bond is helping us to put infrastructure in place, the one we did when I was Speaker, is, is putting different types of money into different parts of the state based on what they need most. But I will tell you this, we are planting a lot less of those crops. There's less cotton being planted, there's less almonds. Farmers, and there's a lot of independent farmers. Let's just remove the big agri-farming interest and realize that this state actually has a lot of longtime family farmers. They are actually, because of the increase in water, they've become much more efficient. It would be great if you were to have some of the folks from the Dem, there's a rural Dem club and Ag Club that started in San Diego County, that could come talk to you about what is sustainable ag, why we still would like to have agriculture in California. We are one of the largest agricultural states. We also have the most restrictive regulations on our agriculture and our food in the country. And should we not be producing food, we will get it from elsewhere, and the same standards may not be in place. But I would say, water use has gone down more than you would even realize because of the cost, and because it is a huge cost in farming. And I've been out to look at some of what they've done in, in some of the fields. Rice is one issue you might think where there's water used, but I would also say, rice is mostly grown in and around Sacramento. Within 100 miles of Sacramento, about 99% of the sushi rice grown in the country is in Sacramento within 100 miles. That also serves as wetlands and flyover for migratory birds. So I think you have to look at it from a holistic standpoint, ask the hard questions, ask how the infrastructure is being funded. I would clearly recommend, if you ever want to do something on water usage, that you look at different parts of the state. San Diego County is very different than Central Valley, very different than Northern. And San Diego County has actually done a lot on conservation of water, but they have reduced a lot. And if anything, between the labor laws, the water rates, really, it's forcing less agriculture growing in areas where maybe it's not being done the right way.
One last question.
Because I want, I believe a new law in California is that all presidential candidates are...
agriculture growing in areas where maybe it's not being done the right way.
One last question.
Because I want, I believe the new law in California is that all presidential candidates must reveal their income taxes.
Yes.
Because it's a hard question. I've also heard that Republicans are going to automatically just have our current president run without going through the primary. Those are two parts of it.
Well, the governor just signed that bill. That was a Senate bill, Mike McGuire's bill. And he, it passed out of both houses, as you would expect it would. It's a reasonable thing to expect. But I think we're now being sued. And we're being sued on gun legislation, too. So we're being sued, but nevertheless, the state has made a point. And we will see how the courts rule in that, but it hasn't stopped us from doing, I think, what we feel like we need to do to make a point in California. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi. Thank you again, Senator Atkins, for appearing. Let's give her another big round of applause. Somebody's stolen my notes. Okay. By the way, if you have not already, get a 50-50 ticket. You can't win if you can't, if you don't run. Our lovely past President Lindestine, they're ready to take your money. Can't win if you don't play. Okay. And yes, we have plenty, and you will get big money when you win. Our next part of the program is our District 7 forum. And I will call the names of the candidates up one by one, and I had notes, but they're gone. Somebody has stolen them and has great information about these candidates. First is Wendy Wheatcroft. Monty McIntyre. Raul Campio. And Sharon Larios. Is she here? And your moderator tonight is going to be our own Marty Emerald. Marty Emerald has been one of the tremendous of us. She was the trouble shooter on KGTV for 20 years. She went after injustice and fought for the little guy. And then in 2008, she ran for and won the District 7 San Diego City Council race, the first Democrat ever to win. Yeah, the first Democrat ever to win in this seat. So in 2012, her district was redrawn, so she ran again in District 9. So we really look forward to her insight into this race, that she's the only Democrat that's ever won it. And welcome Marty very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And let you take your weight.
Thank you so much. And let's hear it for you. Come on. While I find my chair, oh wait, I get to stand up, don't I? Which is great. By the way, I've won in 2008 in large part because of the La Mesa foothills Democratic vote. And I am forever thankful to you for everything you did. Chris Pearson in there dragging me out there, walking precincts, and Jennifer, where are you? Spencer in the back with coffees and organizing precinct captains, and so many people who are on the phones at walking precincts. And I really owe you a great debt of gratitude. So thank you very much. And here we are again with an opportunity, finally, to get another Democrat in this district. And not just to advance our supermajority, but to make sure that somebody is in the 7th district who genuinely cares about what's important to you. And that's what counts, right? So welcome, all of our candidates. Good evening. Hey, I've been asked, first of all, and I noticed this came up, that we don't want to be, you know, sticking it to each other as Democrats. We shouldn't be using violent language and that sort of thing. So I'm going to come right down here, down the row, and do you pledge to follow the indivisible rules about not attacking fellow Democrats and back whoever makes it through to the general election? Do we have your pledge?
Yep.
Yes? Pledge?
Absolutely.
Marty?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
All right, we're going to hold you all to it. Very good. Yes, Mary?
Do you give permission for photographs and video to be taken?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very cool. Okay. One second, I'm just going to see, does this mic work?
Not as well as the monitor.
Taste, taste, taste. But I can give this mic to these folks.
They have, they each have mics.
You all have mics? Okay, very good. Then let's go for it here. And I'll just start here with Sharon, right? Sharon, in one minute or less, tell us about you and why you're running.
This mic over here?
That's your mic.
Just pick it up and hold it close to your mouth.
Good afternoon. Buenos dias, everybody. My name is Sharon Larios. I am a candidate for San Diego City Council, District 7. I am a long-life resident of District 7, born and raised in Linda Vista. My parents immigrated from Mexico, from San Luis Potosí, and from Sayula Jalisco, made Linda Vista their home. And that's where I've been raised and my siblings have been raised: Mara, Bernardo, and Leo, and where I raised my daughter. I went to Carson Elementary, Montgomery Middle School, Kearney High, and Mesa College. So District 7 is my home. I know the good and the bad, have seen the good and the ugly. And I'm running because I have no choice. I didn't have the luxury to choose to live in District 7. This has just been my home. And recently, it's been, I feel, like, under attack, especially Linda Vista. And just in the nation, when you're seeing people like me under attack and seeing the recent events that happened over the weekend in El Paso, people that look like me and people who are like me are a target right now. And while we say that the ones closest to the solution are the ones, the closest to the problem have the solution, our votes and how we back people in that sense doesn't really reflect it. So I'm here to have a voice for the community to properly...
Wonderful.
...represent District 7. I'm not here to say that...
Thank you. Your time is up. We want you, we're going to pick for everybody, everybody starts to move. But I hear you, and you'll have an opportunity. Raul, one minute. Who are you and why do you want this job?
Hi, everyone. From La Mesa Dems, this is probably my eighth or ninth time. It's good to see so many good friends. Again, my name is Raul Campio. I grew up in El Cajon, not very far from Valhalla High School. I went to Uni High School in Linda Vista. And the reason I'm running, Marty, is because I went and got my education, became an attorney, came back to serve at the city attorney's office. And working in with the city agencies, working alongside police and firefighters, I've had to hold people accountable, like domestic abusers and going into court and getting gun violence restraining orders so they couldn't take out that violence with a gun on their spouses or their loved ones. I've worked to help homeless people get into outreach, homeless outreach services, and I've helped people who suffer from drug addiction get into diversion programs, have their records cleaned. And working in the city and knowing all the parties involved, I said to myself, "You know what? I want to take it to the next level because District 7 hasn't been well-represented for the last eight years. It was for 2008 to 2012." And I have the knowledge and the know-how and the practical skills to really help the city and the people of District 7 so that we can really help the most vulnerable in our communities.
Thank you very much. Okay, Marty?
Thank you. My name is Monty McIntyre, and thank you for holding this forum. Thank you, Senator Atkins, for your remarks, and thank you, Marty, for being the moderator. I've lived in San Diego only 50 years, since 69. Moved here when my dad was stationed here, went to Cornell High School, UCSD undergrad, USD Law School. I've been a lawyer for 39 years, representing people and helping people get justice when they've been harmed by wrongdoers. And I have, for the last eighteen of these years, been a peacemaker, working as a mediator, helping resolve contentious, difficult disputes. Now, I'm of the age that I think we need to bring some seasoning and experience to City Hall to try to make good judgments, better decisions on the very complex and difficult problems we have. I've lived in Tierra Santa since 2006. This is my home, and it's the place in San Diego where I've raised my daughters, three wonderful daughters. So I want to try to make San Diego the best it can be, not only now, but also for future generations.
Thanks very much.
Hi, everyone. My name's Wendy Wheatcroft. I'm a mom of three. I was an elementary school teacher for 15 years, and I've spent the past three years eating, sleeping, and breathing gun violence prevention, taking on the NRA, both in San Diego, statewide, and nationally. And I came to realize that if I can take on the NRA, I can take on anyone. And through this work, I've essentially made myself a target, which reared its ugly head this weekend when our local San Diego gun lobby came after me, making threats to my family and my home while I was away in DC at our Moms Demand Action National Conference working to fight gun violence. Isn't it ironic, right? So you can imagine the mood on Saturday as the news from El Paso broke with 2,000 of me in one room. It was heartbreaking, and we were outraged. And you know what we did Saturday night? We dropped everything, and we marched to the White House, and then on through the streets of DC to the Capitol, and we said enough.
And thank you all for keeping in touch with us, and that's going to help out. We're going to start with Wendy and work our way back here on this next question. District 7 has about 90,000 registered voters, more Democrats than Republicans, but an equal number of undecideds. So you need to go out and get those undecideds and get those Republicans to vote for you if you hope to win. When I was running, the rest of the team walked the Democratic households, and I was knocking on only Republican doors. But what will you do to make sure that you are able to cross that divide and bring Republicans along with you and the undecideds along with you? A minute each.
I have a similar field program to what Marty mentioned, where I'm not just knocking Dem doors, I'm knocking MPPs, I'm knocking everyone. And you know what I'm telling people when I'm at a Republican door? You know what? Potholes are nonpartisan. And we do not have to agree on national politics to work locally within our city. And the other issue, too, is the gun issue, right? And we had a Republican ask at the door, "What is her stance on gun control?" And you know what? We are not trying to take anyone's guns away. We are trying to keep people safe and hold gun owners accountable and responsible, and the majority of gun owners agree with us. And that is something that we can all agree on, too.
Thank you very much. Marty? How do you get all of those voters, the Republicans, the undecideds, and the Democrats, to back your campaign and show up on election day in those places?
I think I'll get that because I'm already getting that kind of response from everybody walking the precincts. What happens is, when I'm talking to somebody who's in a Republican household or maybe a declined-to-state household, I'll often get asked, "What's your party?" I'll tell them. And then they'll say, "Well, you know, we're not going to vote for you, blah, blah, blah." I say, "Well, but wait a second. I'm a moderate centrist who's fiscally responsible, and I think we have to be responsible with our funds." And you know what? I've had this happen over and over in conversations. I've had people say, "That makes a lot of sense." And they say they're going to be supporting me in this campaign. So I'm having a good dialogue, and what I find is a lot of homeowners in their homes will listen to a reasonable discussion and will support a candidate who they think will bring some common sense and good decisions to the city council.
Thank you very much. Raul?
Thanks, Marty. The person who actually gave me that advice early on, I believe it was February 20th, was you. Because I saw you at an event and said, "What's your advice?" And you said, "Don't forget about the Republicans." And we haven't. Now, the number-one way I'm going to go get Republican households to vote for me is by talking to them about my family, my values, where I came from. My parents are from Callexico, California. My grandfather, the legacy of our family started on a gas station. My mom is a secretary, my dad's an immigration attorney. They've had the same careers for 45 years, and they've told me, "Work hard and tell the truth." You just start with that. You don't even need to talk about party. But then, I talk about what I do. I'm a prosecutor at the city attorney's office, and that really resonates with people because they know I'm working on a day-to-day basis to hold people accountable, but also be fair and just with what comes off my desk. And the last way I'm going to reach out to Republicans is a lot of Catholics in the community are Republican, and I'm a member of the Mission Church. I'm elected on Sundays, and they see me, and I've been a big member there for a while. And I also have an outreach program. My website is actually in four languages: English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Tagalog. And there's a lot of people who don't speak English who are Republican.
All right. And Sharon?
Yes. Definitely inviting them over to our events and engaging them in the dialogue and the conversation. As a founder of Turnaround Youth Foundation, I help service juvenile gang members in the neighborhood of Linda Vista. And the person that actually pushed me to become civically engaged in my neighborhood was an officer from Western Division who I did not know was a Republican. And our values, what we were trying to do on the street level, were exactly the same: saving youth, preventing crime, and taking a more holistic approach to the community. So a lot of the conversations and a lot of the common goals are exactly the same before we even get to the part of, "Are you Republican? Are you Democrat?" It's more, for me, I'm taking the approach of listening and not instilling everything, but actually listening to their values and seeing how that actually, it actually does align with what we're actually fighting for.
Thank you very much, all four of you. The next question. The budget is really the number-one responsibility of the city council: budget, land use, and policy. But budget is the big one. And we will be challenged, as we have in the past, going forward. When one of you is elected to the next city council, you're going to have to deal with reconstituting a pension system for employees, covering for mistakes made by actuaries at the pension system that have driven the annual pension payment to well over $270 million a year. Just absorb that. Or the need to give pay increases to some employees to keep good workers in the city of San Diego, which has been a real challenge. So when you're elected to the city council, where will your budget priorities go? And how do you intend to work with other council members across the aisle to come in with that balanced budget that is required, but also reflects your priorities? Let's start with Monty on this one.
Number one, I'm going to learn a lot more about the budget when we start, but I've talked already with the independent budget analyst, and it's a big budget. It's a $3 billion budget that the city of San Diego has. I think one of the first things we have to try to do is to try to deal with, stop the spending of additional money with the pension litigation. And I was happy to see the city council starting moving in that direction. Because the California Supreme Court has told us that the election was not valid. And in my opinion, as a 39-year lawyer, we're not going to win that litigation. I think we need to save that money, and we need to start working on changing the charter, try to get the pension back in. And what I found through my research is, if you have a fiscally responsible defined benefit pension, and if it's run responsibly well by the actuary, then it can work. We've had problems in the past because it wasn't funded. I think we ought to modify the charter to require that the pension be funded every year, so we can't have underfunding again in the future. So that's probably one of the biggest ways. We're going to have to deal with problems right away, and I think we can solve that issue, and that's going to help us with recruitment, retention, and other issues of firefighters, police officers, and others.
Thank you very much. Wendy?
One thing that I think is very important is that we make sure that our city divests from gun companies, fossil fuels, and private prisons, and reinvest that money in green energies and the like. That is a priority for me. Additionally, our firefighters have suffered at the hands of Prop B. Understaffing puts all of us at a public safety risk in the face of climate crisis. We are in the climate crisis now. It is fire season year-round, and we are understaffed in the fire department, and they are severely underpaid and overworked. That is a public safety crisis that I plan to address immediately.
Thank you very much. That's called the constant staffing model. And you're paying now more in overtime than it would cost to hire people full-time. Sharon, what would be your priority, and how would you manage this budget? Sharon, what would be your priorities, and how would you manage this budget?
By listening to the workers of the city, first of all. I see that a lot of the problems that the city staff has is also the problem that we have where I work at the County of San Diego. A lot of people do not listen to the workers, and then we are stuck with high caseloads. Our caseloads are ridiculous to manage right now. Our workload is ridiculous. We're working overtime to just catch up. So it starts with having the conversation with those that actually are affected. So talking to the firefighters, talking to the communities, and actually having town halls and forums, which we do not have enough of that in District Seven. And having those citywide as well, where we're engaging all of the districts and seeing what the true needs of all of San Diego is. So it's not so much of what I want as a council member and what my priorities I'm going to force onto the city or my district, but actually listening to the needs of the people and what the needs of the community actually are.
Thank you very much. Raul?
I'm glad you bring up the issue of the pension. So I'm a city worker, and when I moved back home to San Diego and signed on, there was no pension, and we also don't get social security. Because they promised us in 1979 that if you give up social security, you're going to get a great pension. Well, then Prop B took that away from us. And so we have huge staffing problems. 2,500 employees are needed to fully staff the city of San Diego. About 250 of those are police officers. We need more firefighters. And so that means that city services are low. So I think that the number one way we stop losing great police officers to Chula Vista and the sheriff's office is by paying more to our police officers. We actually lost firefighters to other jurisdictions. That's unheard of. We need to pay our firefighters more. Firefighting and SDPD account for about 50% of that budget. So if we want good city services, we've got to pay. Now, when it comes to SD serves and the pension issue, we have a very conservative model. The people on that board use a very low discount rate, so that it requires the employees to pay in more and the city to pay in more. They're not using their fiduciary, they're not meeting their fiduciary duties. If they used reasonable and economically appropriate formulas, we wouldn't be paying so much in to the pension, and that would help us have more money for other budgetary issues.
Thank you very much. It also helps that we're not using the pension as an ATM machine anymore. Now, going to council, what will be the first thing you do when you hit the ground after you've been elected? What's the number one priority, as you see it, in the Seventh District? And what will you start working on right away? And Wendy, we'll go to you first.
There's so many things, right? I really feel strongly that our homelessness, affordable housing, and transit situation are very intricately intertwined. And I look at them as this trifecta, right? You can get into this chicken and the egg debate, but we need transit and affordable housing now to help people get out of homelessness, find jobs, have access to schools. So I think that those three things simultaneously need to be addressed immediately once I get into that seat. We need to have lots more permanent supportive housing built. We need to create a better system for tracking our unsheltered population and the services that they're currently receiving. I sat down with Michael McConnell, a big homelessness advocate recently, and he showed me the database that they use, and it is difficult to use, and it is not integrated with all of the different groups working together to combat homelessness. And that needs to happen right away.
All righty. Next up, Sharon, what will you do when you're elected? You hit the ground running, and what are your priorities?
First one will be repeal the vehicle habitation ordinance. I work day-to-day with our homeless population of the county as the HSS. I'm the first point in contact when you come applied for benefits, Medi-Cal, Cal-Fresh, Cal-Werks. And this has been something that has truly hurt our homeless population. I do not feel that it is right to criminalize somebody for being poor, and city council did a really bad job with placing that as an emergency ordinance without actually having a solution in place right away. So that would be the first thing that I would do.
All right. Thank you very much. Raul?
The number one issue facing the entire city is affordability of housing. It has to be our number one priority, and I agree with Georgette Gomez's policy that was just passed, 5/4, that had a 10% inclusionary rate for people who are low-income to middle-income households. Because we need to create housing for people who work in the service industry, people who don't have high-paying jobs, so that they can live near the neighborhoods or even in the neighborhoods in which they work. Because if we don't do that, they have to drive an hour and a half from San Ysidro or Temecula to work in La Jolla or downtown. That will solve greenhouse gas issues, traffic issues, housing affordability issues. It'll help us desegregate some of our neighborhoods. A lot of these issues are tied up in just how do we afford that. And so I want to jump on the land use committee and make sure that we push through affordable housing and transit.
Thank you very much. And Marty, bring us home.
I will bring us home because I think we need to work on affordable housing. That's an issue that affects all San Diegans, from the homeless to the people like our police and firefighters and lifeguards, to people unless they get the highest wages. But it affects everybody. And one of the biggest problems we have in this town is 40% of the cost of any new housing, whether it's publicly funded or privately funded, is due to delays, red tape, and costs at the Development Services Department. My number one priority is to say, let's start trying to streamline, cut the red tape, make that department as customer-friendly as possible. Let's try to allow people to build public and private housing faster with less expense, and let's pass that saving on to all San Diegans.
Thank you very much. Let's go now to some of the realities of being there at City Hall and getting things done. It's not just going to other council members and asking for their support. Often, it's getting to know city staff, the people who have institutional knowledge, who know where all the skeletons are buried, people who could get excited about great projects. So let's start with you, Raul. How are you going to enlist the support of city staff and make these group efforts at the city and get staff excited in making your priorities their priorities?
Well, I think if I'm elected, the city staff are going to be excited that a person who's worked in the city, has worked at the city attorney's office, understands the internal politics, understands the municipal code process, understands the police department, understands the fire department, understands the courts, is going to be working alongside them. And so I'm going to bring my practical knowledge that I use every single day to the city staff. I have, even though I'm in the criminal division, I have a good overlap with people in the civil division who are the ones who do specific advising to council members, to staff, and to the mayor's office. And so I'm just going to use the personal relationships I've built that brings a pragmatism to electing me.
Terrific. Hey, before we go to Marty next, I just want to thank Tony Atkins again. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your work. And Tony, I think that the people in this room will be on their phones and on their computers tonight and tomorrow morning urging the passage and the signing of SB 1. So keep up the good work. Let's go now to Marty. That, working with the staff, you know, we're told that as electeds, we're not supposed to go and tell staff what to do, but it doesn't mean we can't sit down and have a cup of coffee and start thinking about how we can solve problems together. So how would you do that?
Well, as somebody who's owned and operated several law firms, and I've had wonderful people that I work with, staff as you would call them, but they become friends, they become colleagues, and nobody has a monopoly on good ideas. Nobody has better institutional knowledge typically than the people who've been there for years and years and years. And one of the things I'm going to do, I'm going to reach out and develop relationships with the staff, people in the city at various levels, have an open-door policy, and I'm going to get to know that institutional memory, and I'm going to encourage them to be involved in coming up with ideas, coming up with solutions. And that's partly how you also get their support when you're ready to roll on something and you think you've analyzed it properly. So that would be my approach.
Thank you very much. Wendy?
I've had people call me a connector more than once, and I'm pretty proud of that. As one of the founders of San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention, which is the first local gun violence prevention coalition of its kind in the country, and it's become a model for other cities, we've brought a lot of very diverse groups together to work on this issue in San Diego, and I'm really proud of it. Secondly, as a teacher, I worked at a school for 12 years with 50 other teachers, and we worked very collaboratively. And within my classroom, my students worked very collaboratively. We worked constantly on ways to get along with each other and to work together, and so I'm accustomed to that. And lastly, I've spent the past three years of my life attending city council meetings on a regular basis on a variety of topics. I've built good relationships with a lot of the city council member's staff, and I feel very confident that I can walk into that job and continue to build bridges and build good relationships.
Thank you very much. And Sharon?
I just want to say, I'm not being rude on my phone. There was just a shooting in Linda Vista. Someone got shot five times, and so I'm just in communication, seeing what happened. So definitely not disrespecting anybody or anybody on here. But when we go into City Hall, definitely what we will be bringing and how we will be interacting with city staff is, the staff that I have will be a complete reflection of the community. So we will actually have people from our district representing you at City Hall, just like what my sister Monica is doing with District Four. So I think that with bringing us in District Seven, having somebody from the community who's actually born and raised there now at City Hall representing all of you, will definitely spark some excitement. We do plan on having office hours in the community, and I mean, I'm just excited to be there with Monica's team, with everybody else, and just offering the city staff the same respect. These are our neighbors. So just respecting each other, and yeah, so that's...
Thank you. All right. A couple of more questions, and then I know we want to go to a closing remark, but just a couple of more questions with you folks. Running a campaign, a successful campaign takes many moving parts, a lot of investment. Tell us about the investment you're making and what those moving parts are that will help you make your campaign successful. And Wendy, why don't we start with you down at the end?
You know, running for office is hard, and it's a sacrifice. My husband is here tonight, and my kids are at home with my mom, and I say that we are all running together. I take my kids canvassing with me. Some of you met them at the picnic, handing out popsicles. You know, it's a family affair for us. And I also have an amazing team working alongside me. I have a field consultant, Kate Lyon, who has worked on many campaigns in San Diego and is super knowledgeable. And I just feel like I have the right people, I have the right support in the community, and the relationships that I've built through my deep work in this community over the past few years are sustaining me despite it being hard.
Thank you very much. Sharon, let's go back to you. Are you okay to respond?
Yes, yes. The investment that I'm doing right now is time. Time is everything. I work from eight to five, so I am investing, I am investing all of my time into this when we go hit the streets after work from six to nine. Late nights with my team, I have my family on my team, my daughter's with me everywhere, little Sanaya over there, she's on the phone, seven years old. But she's with me everywhere. She's like, we're going to another meeting, love! And I think for me, the investment really is the education to our community and engaging us with Linda Vista and District Seven. There's not that many people civically engaged, and for me, being somebody that's been left out of the political process, that is what we're bringing. So the investment for us is bringing everybody in. You're going to be seeing a lot of people that have never been a part of the conversation, a lot of people that have not been occupying space in these spaces. We're just bringing people. So regardless of the outcome, we're going to bring more people, more bodies, to register to vote, to get civically engaged, and to be out there to further the movement.
Thank you very much. Raul?
The investment I'm bringing comes from my entire adulthood. Every two years, I have been involved in a campaign since 2006. We talk about the blue wave of 2018. I remember the blue wave of 2006, when we won the House and the Senate, and when I was knocking on doors in New Hampshire, Pennsylvania, Western Massachusetts, Rhode Island, when I was out in college at Harvard. And then I brought that skill when I moved to Nevada to be a teacher. I knocked on doors for Harry Reid when he was running against Sharon Engel. In 2016, I left my job at my law firm to go work for Hillary Clinton in Brooklyn to stop he who shall not be named. And I bring in all this investment of professional politics and grassroots together to actually get out there to win. On top of that, I'm switching over pretty soon at my office to a schedule where I'm going to show up at six in the morning, so I can be able to leave at three in the afternoon, and then go spend the whole afternoon door-knocking, and then taking some time off in January, February, maybe even December. The last part of that too is the early time spent raising money. I've raised $88,000, more money than any Democrat not named Georgette Gomez is running for city council right now, because I know that we need to flip this seat from red to blue. So I've been putting in the hard work already. You're going to get more hard work, even more hard work from me now.
All righty. Marty?
Well, a campaign is hard work, but to win a trial, to get prepared for something that's a big event, which I've done over and over and over, you have to have persistence, you have to have good work ethic, you have to be focused, you have to have strategy. And I've got the best campaign consultants in town, Tom Shepherd and Associates, and I'm delighted to have them because they know what they're doing, and they're doing a tremendous job helping me doing what I have to do. I also happen to have a secret weapon, who's in the room, my lovely wife, Mary Beth, who reaches out to folks and is part of the process in getting to know people, and she's delightful. But we're going to continue doing the walking, the fundraising. Now, I only decided to run for this office in about April, and in 10 weeks, I was able to raise from the San Diego community $55,000. That shows an important commitment to this campaign, and we're going to continue walking, continue getting our message out, continue fundraising. We're going to continue doing what we have to do with endorsements and other things, and the goal is to represent all of you and to be the voice for you in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A little more personal now. Kind of loosen your ties. The one person who has a tie on here. Tell us about your hobbies, books, movies. You know, let's just kind of get to know you a little bit more. And you only have to go for a minute. So Marty, go ahead.
I have a lot of hobbies. I love music. I play guitar. I'm a singer-songwriter. I've recorded songs. I've performed. I learned how to play guitar as a 12th grader in high school in Coronado. I played brass instruments all my life from third grade on. I love music. I also love sports. I love golf. I love to travel. I love good food, good company, and good wine.
I love musicals. I love listening to them with my kids and singing them with my kids and going to see them with my kids. I'm a big gardener, and so is my husband, Tim. We designed our own front yard, water-wise. He hauled 100 wheelbarrows of rocks for me and planted all water-wise native plants. And it's beautiful right now. We've maintained it really well. And I love going to the beach. I could lay in the sun all day, skin cancer be damned, but I just love soaking up the sun and reading books when I have time. I love historical fiction.
Sharon?
I love to dance. Growing up in the most multicultural community in D7, Linda Vista, I got into samba dancing, Brazilian samba. I'm actually the second Musa do Brasil, which is the samba queen of San Diego. That is 2013 in PB, so it was a big contest. Loved to dance. Taught that in New York, taught that out here. So anything carnival, dance hall, soca, music, I could dance. That's my outlet. That's how I relieve my stress and just channel everything out. Dance is everything for me.
Raul?
Regardless of who wins, we could start a band up here. I also like to sing. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm a fiend at karaoke. But one of my, I'd say my two hobbies are being involved at my church. I really take pride in being a lecturer on Sundays and getting to meet people, being part of service programs. It's something that's really important to me and something I got from my family and from going to uni high school. The other thing I like doing is driving 20 minutes into East County to have dinner with my parents at least once a week. You know, I know what the 94 freeway is. I know a lot of San Diegans don't, but I like to take that home and make, you know, fried chicken tacos and Spanish rice with my mom, and sit on the back patio with my dad grilling a steak and talking about his legal work, my legal work, and yeah, just spending time with my parents.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Let's, let Sharon start this one. What's the best advice you've ever received? Best advice you've ever received? If you want to take a minute, we can.
Yeah, I guess, wasn't really advice, it was more of a saying that my dad used to say. He used to say, basically, what you're walking towards, I already came out of, because I was a really bad liar when I was little. Now, I'm saying it with my daughter, I'm like, you are so sneaky, and every single time, I just, yeah, so the path you've walked, I've already walked out of, so I know what you're doing and I know what you're like.
All right, that's a good addition. Raul, the best advice you ever got?
I'd say the best advice I ever got came from my brother when he, I remember I was five years old and, I don't know, I told on him on something that I also did, and he said, never be a hypocrite, because there is nothing worse than being a hypocrite, than being a person who's two-faced. And I really admire my brother for explaining the seriousness of honesty to me. It's something that I've found is incredibly helpful in every walk of life. Being an attorney, you have to tell the judge the truth, and sometimes you don't know and you say, I have to get back to you. Never be afraid to say, I don't know. That's part of being honest, putting forward an honest face, and so I'd have to say, just be honest, that comes from my dad, but I really remember my brother hitting me and saying, don't be a hypocrite.
Monty, best advice you ever got?
I got my best advice from my dad, he's still alive, he's a retired Navy captain who was a pilot during Vietnam, and he always said, work hard, be honest, and always do your best. He had high expectations, and he gave me great advice.
Wendy?
When I was in sixth grade, my parents got divorced, and my mom immediately started nursing school and was raising my sister and I, working, going to school full-time, and she was stressed and it was hard for her, and she would always say to me, no guts, no glory. And so throughout my adult life, when I'm faced with gun nuts or thinking about running for office, I hear that in my head, no guts, no glory, and I go for it.
Just one final question to you, one final statement, and we will start with Monty. Let's wrap it up. What message would you like to leave this crowd with? And your aspirations, I suppose, so your final thoughts?
You know, I think a lot of times, especially in recent years, but it's also been true, that we get some people who run for city office, the city hall, and it may be the beginning of a long political career. I think we need to solve our problems in San Diego now, and I want to solve the problems and make the best answers and figure out the best solutions now for us and our children and our children's children. And I'm too old to be starting a new political career. I figure I've got about eight to 10 years of good work life left in me. After practicing law for 39 years, I'm dedicated to give back to the city of San Diego, which has been wonderful to me and my family, that I've raised all my daughters here in San Diego. So I hope that you will join me in my effort to try to make better decisions and make our city the best city that it can be for future generations.
Thank you very much. Wendy?
Well, we all know that our country is at a precipice, and likewise, so is San Diego. And the best thing that we can do to protect San Diego is to hunker down locally and to really band together and address these local issues that are plaguing our city. And I feel like we can do it. I have this deep sense of purpose and this welling up of hope inside of me and this fight to go to battle for my kids and for all of our kids' futures, because that's what's at stake, right? I brought these three kids into the world, and I feel this deep, urgent responsibility to fix what is ailing our city and this country. So I hope you'll join me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make District Seven livable and safe and some, a place where people actually want to stay there and grow up and live. Currently, right now in my neighborhood, I mean, you just want to grow up and get out of the hood, you don't see longevity in living in District Seven, and that's sad. My brother currently, we had to fly him out to Georgia because the gang violence in Linda Vista was getting so hard, and it just makes me so mad that we could, we cannot build a safe neighborhood here, that he has to go out of state to be safe. And currently with the situation that we have right now, I mean, there's just shootings every single day, our lives are at stake every single day if there's not shootings, there's ICE raids, families are being separated, and people just, for being brown, are being murdered, and that's not right. So San Diego needs to take a bold approach and actually start electing people that are a reflection of the community. We need to listen to the community, we need to build a longer table, a bigger table for those voices that are not at the table right now. And all the work that I have done, career-wise and just my lived experience, brings that. So I'm not somebody that's going to be here and tell you that my priorities, that my word is bond, I'm here to listen. So we're building our future now, and I hope that you can join us. To learn more about our campaign and actually get connected to us, go to lariosd7.com, and it is larios, not larios, so we're all going to learn to say that, larios. Thank you.
And Raul, bring it home.
I've been friends with the members of this club for many months, I've been a member since, I believe, since the end of last year. And I think the people in this room have gotten to know me pretty well. They, you understand my values. You know, the reason I came home to serve the city of San Diego was driven by a passion to help the vulnerable, to help people like my brother who succumbed to an opioid overdose, because, and we all understand, that's an epidemic across the country, and that I fight in court every day for people like him. You've heard the stories of the people I've helped get good plea deals to get into therapy and diversion. I'm here because the voiceless in San Diego need a champion, and this is our chance to flip the district that should have been blue for the last two times, but Republicans were able to win it with 50% plus one in June. Well, this time, we're going to go to November, and we're going to win it, we're going to stand up for the vulnerable, we're going to stand up to the powerful, we're going to represent you at city hall for the first time since 2012, and I want to be the guy to do that. I'm from East County, I love San Diego, I came home to serve San Diego, and I hope you'll run with Raul. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, from District Seven, Linda Vista, Sharon Anguila, Raul Campillo, Monty McIntyre, and Wendy Weeprock. Thank you very much. And I feel very thankful to be here today.
And you all have websites, right, that we can check out?
Yes.
All of them have a website. If you would like to help them, if you would like to volunteer or give them money, I'm sure that we'd be very eager to talk to you about that. It's time for candidate announcements. If you want to make an announcement, line up over here, one minute, Jeff?
Yeah.
One minute, quickly, quickly, please, if you haven't already spoken. Also, this is your last chance to buy 50/50 raffle tickets. Get them while they're hot.
Any other, maybe we can all answer?
Nobody wants to make an announcement?
Announcement?
Okay.
Announcement?
Announcements, this is your one chance to make an announcement.
Michelle Krug, your regional director for Area 20. I want to let everybody know that we have an amazing opportunity that only comes up every 10 years to get onto, thank you, onto the redistricting committee for the state. They have extended the deadline till August 19th, Go to Shape California's Future. They're going to be picking five Democrats, five Republicans, and four others. It's an amazing opportunity to help draw those lines right after the census. So please check it out, Shape California's Future. And when Tony Atkins talked about the census, that's what I've been mostly involved with, Friday, August 16th, at ECC, 10 o'clock in the morning till 12, will have a major kickoff. So if you can make it, please do.
Thanks, Miguel.
How's everybody doing? All right, just trying to wake you guys up. I know it's late. We had some great candidates speak today. My name is Joaquín Vázquez, I'm running for California's 53rd congressional district, that includes where we're sitting right now. Reason I'm running is because, like we've heard, there's a lot of issues that are facing, that are challenging our communities, but they're not only local issues that were brought up, they are national issues that have not made it to the top of the agenda in Washington. And I know how that is over there. Being in Washington, working in the Obama administration, I see how, when I get up, advocate for folks, for gun safety, for education, for access to Medicare, for economic opportunity, people say, why are you complaining? Why are you here if you come from San Diego? San Diego was nothing but blue skies, shiny beaches, some nice hiking trails, but that's not all. Ladies and gentlemen, you are here because you know that things are not well for us. You are here because you're struggling with not enough access to services in your clinics for your children, for your, for your, their children, financial stability. We haven't really recuperated from the financial crisis that was created through the Bush administration. So, I'm here to fight for you, I'm here to take that seat back from the rich and powerful, I'm here to start including everyone that's been left behind, to turn that ship around and actually start getting things done for every single one of you. So my name is Joaquín Vázquez, I'm running for the California 53rd congressional district, and I'm looking forward to meeting the folks that I have not met, which is probably 50% of you here in this, in this room. Let's talk. Thank you.
Okay, also remember, next month, our program is going to be, His Honor Scott Peters is going to be talking to us, and we'll have a panel on protecting women's reproductive rights with Planned Parenthood, NARL, and the ACLU. Now it is time for our raffle. Bring it on down here, let's, and let's, let's pick a winner. Here's lovely Linda. I do not have a pony in this race, I have, my chances of winning are very slim, because I didn't buy a ticket.
$77.
$77. Somebody's out there. Call out your tickets.
Oh my God.
Oh no.
It's overflowing.
Keep her honest, people. I do not have, I do not have a dog in this race.
The winner is, is 0701280. Oh, so close, who's got it? 0701280. Who? Who's got it? What's your name?
Joanne Barron.
Joanne Barron, yay, congratulations. Okay, thank you so much for being here tonight, let's keep fighting, Albo Blue, no matter who, and we'll see you next month, September 4th, right back here. Thanks for being here, we're adjourned at, I have my stopwatch on. It is, hey, 26, thank you.